Political Leader: Deacon Mitchell. Executive Members of the National Democratic Congress. Candidate for the South: Andy Williams. Candidate for St Andrews South East: Mr David Andrews. Specially invited guests: Members of the media, viewers online, good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, we have convened here today with purpose and intent. The objective here is simple: As a party, we want to propose to you our plans for transforming the lives and conditions of the working people of Grenada, Karakoo and Pitti Martnik. The NDC believes that this proposal to you, to the relevant stakeholders, is critical and timely. We trust that this meeting today will be the genesis of fruitful and cooperative communication between the business community, the trade unions, workers and the National Democratic Congress. Let me state for the record that the National Democratic Congress has always been a party with unequivocal support for the workers of Grenada, Karakoo and Pitti Martnik. In fact, as history shows, the party was born out of the struggle of the workers. Our love for the workers is genuine, as we know all too well that the workers of Grenada, Karakoo and Pitti Martnik are the ones who have moved Grenada before. And these are the people who will play the greatest role in moving Grenada forward again. Ladies and gentlemen, without taking up much more time, I want to officially welcome you to this evening's proceedings. And I trust that open minds and genuine love for country would allow you to entertain our ideas. Allow me to introduce our political leader, Mr Deacon Mitchell. A man who has come from humble beginnings, from humble working class family, who have represented the excellence that the working class people produce. This is a man who is familiar with the struggles of the working class and who has risen to become one of the foremost practitioners in his field. He is determined to put his experience to work for all Grenadians and to create a better Grenada for all, but particularly our workers. So without further delay, I would now invite Mr Deacon Mitchell to the podium.
Good evening to everyone present and good evening to all our citizens of Grenada, Pitti Martnik, Karakoo and the citizens in the diaspora. For those of you who are viewing online, a special good evening to you as well. Let me take the time to thank our public relations officer, Orlando. I call him the hardest working member of this organisation because, as you can probably tell, perception is reality and everything that you see, that I speak of or every show or event that we do, Orlando is integral to that, so I want to publicly thank him and acknowledge him. And Orlando, like myself, comes from the working class. And to a large extent, Grenada is working class. I can't see that we have a lot of wealthy people in Grenada. And from our perspective, the middle class that probably once existed has been squeezed into the working and poor class. And it's our collective responsibility as a political organisation to ensure that we in fact encourage worker productivity, that we encourage our workers to put Grenada first, to put themselves and their family first, and to ensure that it is the workers who will benefit from their hard work. As I said when I addressed the nation last Wednesday, we intend to either on a weekly or every two weeks rollout or platform for transforming Grenada. And we thought it only fitting, an act, that we should start with addressing issues that affect our workers in Grenada, particularly given that Monday was in fact the official holiday for May Day. And we have themed the platform for workers, no pun intended, WORK. And that acronym means that the workers own, reap and keep the benefits of their work. Let me repeat that. Work. The workers shall own, reap and keep the benefits of their work. And so our intention is to ensure that the workers of Grenada, from the time they commence their working life, are given the opportunity to have a path through which they can grow, through which they can own, through which they can keep and reap the benefits of their hard work. And in keeping that benefit of your hard work, we perhaps want to start with the most topical and current issue affecting particularly public workers. But I want to make this point, that the issue of pension, the payment of pensions and the payment of gratuity upon retirement is not an issue that is unique to public workers only. It is an issue that affects and will affect every Grenadian worker. And addressing the pension payment for public workers is only the beginning of the process of transforming the working lives of Grenadians to ensure that upon their retirement, they in fact have a pension or a gratuity or can benefit from a retirement savings plan. And so the National Democratic Congress will, should and when it forms the government, pay the public workers their pension. In fact, our view, and we call upon the government, to commence the process of paying pensions to any worker, any public servant who has and who will retire from the effective date of delivery of the judgment in the High Court. Two, we will augment the pensions desk at the Ministry of Finance. We are satisfied that there is no need for any special advisory body to be set up to address the payment of the pensions. A pension secretariat should already have existed at the Ministry of Finance to facilitate the payment of pensions. What we will do is to provide the additional resources to the pension secretariat to ensure that the pension secretariat at the Ministry of Finance can properly and adequately, one, within ninety days of us assuming office, ascertain all of the public workers who are entitled to a pension. Two, ascertain how many of those workers have since passed the great beyond so that we can assess the payment that has to be made to their estate. And thirdly, once we have ascertained the extent of the pension that is due to the public workers, we will raise the money. We will, if necessary, borrow the money, either by the issuance of a government bond or straight borrowing from the financial institutions within the region, and we will pay that money to our public servants, particularly the public servants who have not been paid their pensions from 1985 to the date of the judgment. Now, we are not in governments and so we are not in a position to give you an accurate figure as to the likely pension payment, particularly the retroactive aspect of it. But our preliminary, and I say preliminary, estimate suggests that the payment could be within the region of four hundred to five hundred million EC dollars. That sounds like a lot of money. And to some extent, it is. But if ever there was a time when governments within the region, and when the government of Grenada is able to borrow and borrow cheaply, it is now. The interest rates that governments can borrow have reduced drastically and in some instances, government can borrow as low as one and two percent interest rates on funds. So we are satisfied that there is sufficient liquidity within the financial institutions within Grenada and the region. In fact, a banker once said to me that there is so much liquidity in the banks that if you lean on the door, the money will fall out. So we are satisfied that there is sufficient liquidity within Grenada and the regional market for the government to borrow and to pay the pension. So I want to spend a little time on what the payment of the pension will mean. That will be the commencement of the transformation of the economy of Grenada. If half a billion dollars is pumped into the economy of Grenada and placed in the hands of Grenadians, the first entity that will benefit from that is the government of Grenada. Because that money will be spent in Grenada. Our retirees will repair their homes, will be able to pay their bills, will be able to buy food, will be able to help their children and grandchildren go to school, study, etc. They will hire young people, they will create and make new businesses. All of that means the payment of VAT. We pay VAT on almost any and every activity in Grenada. And once economic activity is increased, the government's revenue from a taxation perspective is increased. At the port, at the customs, banking services, real estate services, legal services, construction, the purchase of goods and services. So make no mistake, the payment of the pensions will positively impact on every aspect of our lives, including the collection of revenue by the government. So I assure our workers, particularly those workers who are now on contract, particularly those workers who are style as Imani workers, make no fear, have no fear. There is no need for you to be afraid and to be worried about the consequences of the public workers being paid their pension. Because the public workers fight for the payment of their pension is a fight for the payment of your pension. Let me repeat that. The public workers' fight for the payment of their pension is a fight for the payment of pension for you. Because as contract workers and as Imani workers, you have no pension, you have no retirement savings plan, you have no gratuity plan, you have no entitlement to severance. And the current administration is not, in many instances, even paying NIS on your behalf. I will come to that in a moment. So the point is this: As part of the transformation, the economic and social transformation of Grenada, the right and the entitlement to a pension should be a right and an entitlement of every single worker in Grenada, regardless of whether you're in the public service, regardless of whether you're in the private service and regardless of the name that is ascribed to you. Once you are working and once you've worked your life and you reach retirement, you should be entitled to a pension, you should be entitled to a gratuity. And all of the economists, all of the intellectuals will tell you that there are countless studies which demonstrate the overall positive impact of having pension systems in place for workers. And I think everyone knows that if you retire and upon your retirement you have no income, that you will be plunged into poverty. And if you are plunged into poverty and several others are plunged into poverty, it simply means that as a nation, we are getting poor. And so this is not a fight between workers or amongst workers. Don't let anyone scare you into thinking if the public workers are paid their pensions that you will have to go home or that you will not be paid or that the government will not be able to afford to pay you. As I said, the payment of the pensions will lead to an economic boom in Grenada and the first recipient of that economic boom will be the government of Grenada. And so the government of Grenada will have more revenue to in fact pay more workers. So you can be rest assured that when we commit to the payment of the pensions, we are doing so because it is in the best interests of Grenada, it is in the best interests of all Grenadians and it will certainly begin the process of the economic transformation of Grenada. Following lock-in in step with the issue of the payment of the pensions is the issue of the regularisation of the status of contract workers and Imani workers in Grenada. A government is supposed to lead by example. A government is supposed to uphold the laws and set the example. The rule of law applies as much to the government, most of the government, than its citizens. I have repeatedly said, if the task you are performing, if the job you are filling is a job that is always required by the entity that you work for, in this case, the government of Grenada, then there should be no issue of you being on a temporary or a fixed term contract. Your employment should be permanent, your employment should be indefinite and all of the benefits that comes with that should be attributed to your employment. And therefore, the National Democratic Congress commits to regularising the status of contract workers who are working for the government and Imani workers who are working for the government within twelve months of assuming office. At my very first press conference on becoming political leader of the National Democratic Congress, I made it clear that under National Democratic Congress government, there will be one public service. And I am going to repeat that. There will be one public service. If you are working for and on behalf of the State of Grenada and you are fulfilling a permanent job, there is no need to have you branded as an Imani worker and there is no need for you to be placed on contract. You will be regularised and made part of the public service. But I just want to reflect a little on the consequences of our workers being placed on contract and of the consequences of our workers being branded as Imani and placed on contract. The consequences of that are, as I've said, you will not have a pension. For many of the contract workers, the government of Grenada has told them that they are required to pay their own NIS. And I'm calling out the national insurance scheme because we all know that if a private employer refuses to pay the NIS contributions on behalf of his employees, they will be hauling him to the High Court, to the magistrate court, they will be auditing him up left, right and centre and they will be hugging him down to ensure that the contributions are paid. The national insurance scheme is therefore required to ensure that the government of Grenada pays the NIS contribution for all of the employees of the government of Grenada. And let us understand what that means. It means if NIS is not being paid for you, you will not get an NIS pension, as little as it is. You will not be able to claim NIS sick leave, you will not be able to claim NIS maternity leave, you will not be able to claim a workplace benefit injury. The question therefore is, why would a government that cares about its people, about its workers, place its workers in a position where the statutory scheme that has been established since 1983, for all workers to have social security benefits like maternity leave, like sick leave, like workplace employment injury benefits, like a pension, like a funeral death grant, be taken away from you by the government refusing to pay your NIS contributions? It is wrong, it is illegal and the National Democratic Congress commits that on forming the next government, we will immediately cease the practice of requiring our employees to pay their own NIS. And we will pay the contributions that an employee is required to pay and do the right thing and collect the employee's portion of the contributions and remit it to the national insurance scheme. But I go further and call upon the national insurance scheme to in fact audit the government and to make sure that for all of those employees who have been disadvantaged thus far by the government's refusal to pay the NIS, that in fact that back portion of the NIS is paid. The national insurance scheme needs to ensure that it demands from the government because that in effect would also be another debt and other arrears owed by the government to the national insurance scheme on behalf of the workers of Grenada. I want to raise one other point that workers in the public service are aware of. For a long time, almost approaching a decade, since the government's self-imposed structural adjustment programme, the government has been engaged in a process of attrition, which means that for every ten persons who retire from the public service, they are probably hiring two or three maximum. The effect of it is that you have seven unfulfilled positions within the public service. For Imani and contract workers, when we say we will regularise the public service, that is what we're talking about. All of these vacancies need to be filled to ensure that the government can effectively deliver the services that the people of Grenada need. And we know only too well that the government has been failing in delivering the services that the government is expected and required to deliver to its citizens in any number of government departments. From the Department of Fisheries to the Ministry of Agriculture, to our coathouses, to our number four administrative services, there is a lack of personnel to perform the services on behalf of the citizens of Grenada. And there are tonnes of vacancies which are required to be filled and that is one way of filling those vacancies by regularising the status of our contract workers. So have no fear. If you are doing the job, you will be rewarded for doing the job. And that's why we say if you work, you are entitled to own, you are entitled to reap and you are entitled to keep. We also wish to address the issue of how workers are paid. As I said last Wednesday, we intend and we commit, starting with the public service, to ensure that workers are paid twice a month. We will, and if necessary, after consultation with the private sector, because in some areas of the private sector, workers are already being paid twice a month, or in some cases fortnightly. But for the other areas of the private sector where this has not yet been done, we will enter into dialogue and discussions and consultations with the private sector, with employers, with the Chamber of Commerce, with small and medium businesses, to encourage them. And if necessary, to legislate and put into law that our employees shall be paid bimonthly across all sectors of Grenada. And we commit to doing so again within the first 24 months of our taking office. Many of our employees, many of our workers, because of cash flow problems, are required to borrow consumer loans at excessively high interest rates of 14 and 16%, which puts them in a debt trap cycle that they are unable to come out of. And many instances, it is simply because of their inability to manage the cash flow because they are paid once a month. But the bills aren't always once a month. The bills are sometimes in the middle of the month. And we want to give our workers the opportunity to better manage the cash flow and to remove themselves from that type of debt trap by ensuring that they are paid twice a month. And so even now, we are encouraging, particularly members of the private sector, to start examining and looking at putting the necessary accounting and administrative structures in place, as well as our banking and lending institutions, to begin the process of transforming how our workers are paid and encouraging them to be paid twice a month. The minimum wage. We recognise that in addition to the rising cost of living, that in some sectors of Grenada, there has been stagnation and in some instances regression in the payment and particularly increases in salaries. We are therefore committing, again, after consultation with the business community, after consultation with the trade unions and employees' representations, representatives, after consultation with all stakeholders, to raising the minimum wage of workers across all sectors in Grenada. This is one aspect of addressing workers' ability to stay current and to earn a decent living wage. But we also recognise that the cost of living is a major issue that we have to tackle, and we will in fact address this in another forum. But for now, the commitment is to ensure that across all sectors of Grenada, after we have adequately consulted with all those who are likely to be affected, that in fact the minimum wage be increased, and we are committing to do so. Finally, on the issue of how we enhance employer and employee, trade union and employer representatives relationship, we shall amend the labour code to ensure that there is an efficient, affordable and effective dispute resolution mechanism to address disputes between individual employers and individual employees and between trade unions and employers. And our proposed amendments will include the following. One, we will set a 30-day limit by which the Office of the Labour Commissioner must hold a mediation meeting between an employer and an employee whenever either side raises a dispute or a grievance or a conflict between a trade union or an employer or an employer and an employee. Two, we will eliminate, we will eliminate sending any disputes to the Minister of Labour. The Minister of Labour is a politician. The Minister of Labour oftentimes holds other portfolios and is frankly too busy or too uninterested to adequately and effectively and in a timely manner address grievances or complaints by employees or trade unions or employers. So there is no point in sending disputes to the Office of the Minister of Labour. What we propose to do is to establish a permanent arbitration tribunal. Staffed by one labour employee representative, selected by them, staffed by one employer or business community representative, and staffed by a lawyer of a certain amount of years' standing and experience. This three-man committee will constitute a permanent arbitration tribunal from which all disputes which are not resolved within the 30-day period before the Labour Commissioner shall automatically go before this arbitration tribunal. And the ruling of the arbitration tribunal will be final. In doing so, we intend to abolish the distinction between essential and non-essential workers. If a worker has a dispute, there should be no arbitrary line that says, if you work in a poor company, for example, you can go before an arbitration tribunal. But if you work in a hotel, you can't go before an arbitration tribunal. So we will abolish the distinction for the purposes of dispute settlement between essential and non-essential workers. All workers deserve dignity and all work is essential. And therefore, we expect that in doing so, we will be providing to both employers and employees a swift, a cheap and efficient means of resolving disputes. And let me make this clear. This process is better suited, industrial disputes, employer-employee grievances are better suited for a quick and efficient dispute resolution process than going before a court. If you go to court, you are going to have to hire a lawyer. You are going to have to spend a lot of money. And as we all know, it takes forever. The reality is, if the dispute is whether I should be paid $400 as opposed to $1,000 upon the termination of my employment, you wouldn't even be able to afford a lawyer if the extent of the dispute is a couple hundred dollars. So court proceedings are not proceedings and court processes and procedures are not the type of processes or procedures that are suitable for industrial-type relation matters. And this has been the case for quite a while. The challenge in Grenada is that we have not addressed this head-on, and we have allowed it to meander its way over the last decade into no man's land. So I'm calling upon our colleagues in the trade union movement, I'm calling upon our colleagues in the business community, I'm calling upon our employers to in fact support the amendments that we are proposing to ensure that both employers and employees have an efficient and permanent dispute resolution process in place. And we intend to make these amendments to the labour law within 90 days of forming the government. So we want to make it clear to our workers that the National Democratic Congress, which was formed out of the struggle to protect public servants from being retrenched, and you'd see almost 35 years later, our workers are still facing significant challenges. And we've had an administration in place that has contributed regrettably to many of the significant challenges that our workers face. The National Democratic Congress intends to overcome those challenges, to solve those challenges, and to implement the programmes that I have just outlined. And so I want to assure you that the same zest, the same zeal, the same vigour I represented my clients with as an attorney at law, it is the same zeal, it is the same zest, it is the same vigour that this son of labourers will bring towards defending and championing the cause of the working class of Pity Martnik, Karik and Grenada. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, you have heard it from our political leader, Deacon Mitchell, our party's firm intent to not conduct business as usual. We are in difficult times and we need to think different and be transformative. And the NDC has full intent, will, and most importantly, the team, to be transformative and to transform Grenada, Karik and Pity Martnik. So the payment of pensions will happen for the public servants. We will increase the minimum wage. We will regularise Imani and contract workers. We will implement a twice-monthly payment schedule for all Grenadian workers. And as our political leader said, we will amend the labour code to ensure that all employees and employers have an efficient and accessible, but most importantly, a cheap way of resolving trade and labour disputes. This is the first of a series of consultations and meetings we will have with the Grenadian people to outline our plans and programmes for moving this country forward. Next week, we'll be addressing the issue of cost of living. So we ask you to stay tuned to our Facebook page. More details on this presentation will be provided as we roll out more plans and more programmes heading into the next general elections. Thank you for attending and a safe journey home. We have one question?
Um, just a question. I wondered what thinking is regarding red leg. Um, and with this, there's some load shedding going on. And I'm wondering if you're planning on maybe bringing back the completed brand red leg? I'm relatively new to Grenada, so I really don't know the details of the situation. But I'm just a little bit diverse with, um, you know, the organisation. I'm thinking that this is probably, um, a preview of the future.
Yeah, we all feel that pain and we're experiencing that. Having reliable power is going to be important for transforming this country. So I'd probably let our political leader say our two pens on this.
Thank you for the question. I think we were hoping to have more labour-related questions, but, you know, the question is very valid. So we intend to also roll out our energy programme, energy platform, and Grenec obviously is going to be essential to this. I think as a citizen of Grenada, and I would also disclose to you that I once represented, I provided legal services to Grenec and to the then-majority shareholder of Grenec as well. So I want to make that disclosure clear. And I was also involved in the arbitration case between WRB and the government of Grenada, which WRB was successful in, and which as a result, the government of Grenada had to pay a huge sum of money to WRB to re-acquire 50% ownership of Grenec. As citizens of Grenada, we still do not know where the government of Grenada found the $161 million to pay WRB. That has never been disclosed to us. We have to assume that it is the government of Grenada who owns the 50% shares. The challenge we face is that, right now, the board of Grenec, regrettably, does not have anyone on it, in my humble opinion, who has any experience or expertise in power generation, energy, or any related field. That's the reality. The board is essentially a politically-appointed board by the government of Grenada. And as constituted in whole or in parts, the persons there are not experienced, qualified or competent to set policy, in my humble opinion, for a poor company in a small nation developing state. With the exit of WRB, and simultaneous with that came the retirement of two of the top senior executives as well, who were from, one from Grenada and one from the region. The general manager actually would have left, and the chief financial officer also retired. And we have in place now an acting general manager who is very competent. He's been with the company for a number of years. He is properly the chief engineer of the company, but he's acting as the general manager. And you still have in place the management team, the local management team that would be dealing with things like HR and customer service and so on. But what we don't have respectfully is people who can plan and project and understand the needs, in my humble opinion, of Grenada over the next 15 to 20 to 25 years. And if it was part of our energy platform, we'll be addressing this. Because we have to recognise that if Grenada is going to develop a reliable, stable and affordable energy platform, it's going to be required to ensure that happens. Like you, I should have to think that there'd be more load shedding. But unfortunately, history has a way of repeating itself. Our governments, and I don't just mean that for NNP, have not shown in the past that they have the capacity to run even some of our statutory bodies. Whether it's the postal office, whether it's gravel and concrete, whether it's MNIB, whether it's airport authority, we can go on and on. So the reality is, Grenec is a private company. There are a lot of Grenadian shareholders, as many as 1,500 of them, who are used to being paid a dividend every year. Perhaps the only time when that didn't happen was during the period of Hurricane Ivan. But even if they were not paid a dividend, I think they were proud of the fact that electricity was restored, notwithstanding the almost complete devastation of the island in a very quick timeframe. The reality though is, with the government becoming the majority shareholder again, and with the government not having the expertise or the competence to properly plan and put people who can direct policy for the company, the company has already started suffering financially. And so the reality is, for particularly those shareholders who invested in Grenec, the individual Grenadians, on the premise that you would have a major shareholder who understood power generation and who knows what it's doing to help guide the company, to make sure that the company is profitable and to make sure that we have, even if it might be expensive, reliable energy is something that we will have to look at. We will have to ensure that going forward, that Grenec and particularly the management and the board of Grenec are comprised of persons, even if the government remains a major shareholder, are comprised of persons who understand electricity generation, transmission and distribution. And we also have to look at renewable energy. The truth is, there is a Public Utilities Commission which I think, when it was conceived, it was conceived on the assumption that Grenec will remain in the hands of largely private shareholders. But now Grenec is a government entity to some extent because the government owns it, has majority shares. And the Public Utilities Regulatory Commission is a government-appointed statutory body. So you have the government attempting to regulate the government effectively. And in my humble opinion, neither of them knows what it is doing. And so the Public Utilities Regulatory Commission, for example, has frustrated the efforts of many of the individual Grenadians who've sought to buy solar panels and who've sought to do some form of solar generation on their own by having a chaotic and ill-taught process. And many of them have been complaining about the fact that effectively, instead of helping the country to go more and more into renewables, instead of helping persons to have more and more solar panels and to use more and more renewable energy, they're in fact frustrating them and making it difficult for them to actually go into that route. So our entire energy platform will address this, not just Grenec, but the need to move the country in a direction where we use more renewable energy and become less dependent on importing diesel to burn for our energy consumption. So I hope I've done some justice to answering the question.
Any additional questions in regard to our presentation on the workers? You have one question? You want to just come forward so that the audience online can hear you?
Well, last person, you can always repeat them.
Yeah, no problem.
I think I missed something. I didn't hear you mention the workers in the public service who are acting. I think you mentioned that category. Because 3% of the public service, they are actors.
So just for those online, the question relates to the persons in the public service who are currently acting, which is probably about half the public service now. which is probably about half the public service now. So Mr Mitchell?
I, I always look at when people write letters and they have AG in brackets on the side to say they're acting, it's Shakespeare play. Everybody's an actor. But no, this is an easy one. Again, you know, you're not going to build confidence and work at productivity if it's a Shakespeare play. And if half of your public service is acting, it's either they're capable of doing the job or they're not. If there's a probation period, if there's an acting period, you have the acting period. And if you're satisfied because you are measuring and you are testing that the persons have the capacity to get the job, then they should be made permanent. And so the same way in which we've advocated fulfilling those vacant positions is the same way we plan on transforming persons from being on a Shakespeare play to being in a real life Grenadian play where you become a permanent member of the, the public service. So I'm happy you've raised that and we will certainly note it and, and address it. Thank you. Yes? All right, thank you. So I will take the first question first. So let me clarify. I'm talking about dispute resolution mechanisms in relation to the Minister of Labour. There are other rules that the Minister of Labour plays under the current legislation. And I'm saying amending the current legislation. So I don't know if you're aware, but I can tell you, because I've practised industrial relations for an extensive period of time, it takes a long time to get anything out of the Ministry of Labour. Particularly once it leaves the hands of the Labour Commissioner. I've dealt with matters where after the Labour Commissioner has made his recommendation or, or suggestions, or he's had his meetings and the parties are dissatisfied, the next step is to go to the Minister of Labour. It takes a phenomenally long time to even get a sit down with the Minister of Labour. And the reason's obvious. As a minister, as a politician, he simply doesn't have the time to sit, to hear individual disputes or grievances between employees and employers. And that's the truth. And many times, even when I'm representing employers, I hear the frustrations of the workers. They lose faith in the system because it's just taking too long and justice denied, justice that is delayed is justice denied. So on that basis alone, on that basis alone, people are left frustrated, fed up, losing hope with the system of dispute resolution. People want to know whether they're right or wrong. If they're wrong, at least tell them they're wrong, they move on with their lives. But when they have no decision because they simply can't even get a meeting or a conciliation meeting, it frustrates them. But, but there's more to dispute resolution than just resolving an individual dispute. You have to be able to guide people. And the advantage of having a permanent arbitration tribunal is this. When that tribunal rules on a matter, it provides guidance for employers and employees. So that when the matter comes up again, you would have had a ruling by an arbitration tribunal so that the employer and the employee and the trade union and their lawyers and illegal representatives could say, look, in particular circumstances, the tribunal has already ruled a particular way. And it is likely therefore that the tribunal will follow its own decision. And so you can properly advise and guide people so that oftentimes they don't even have to come back to the Labour Commissioner or come back to the tribunal because they've had some guidance. As it stands now, there is no permanent arbitration tribunal establishing Grenada. What you have is occasionally, occasionally, when the matter is big enough or important enough, or if the parties have enough money to pay for it, they constitute ad hoc arbitration tribunals to render decisions on matters. That probably happens once a year for some big matter or if somebody is just dogged enough or persistent enough. But for the average employee, they wouldn't have the resources, they wouldn't have the time, nor the effort to be dogged enough. And so the system that currently stands effectively breaks them down and leaves them walking away frustrated without having had the opportunity to have their grievance or their issue or their dispute dealt with. So I'm saying this is only in relation to dispute resolution. There are other things that the Minister of Labour has to do under, under the legislation, which we have no quarrel with and which we are not taking issue with. But when it comes to a dispute, it is better to deal with these things effectively, cheaply and critically. The advantage of arbitration tribunals is that you don't need lawyers. Parties can come and represent themselves. They can call their own witnesses. It's not a court. It is a far less formal system that allows parties to be able to come forward and if they don't want to have a lawyer, represent themselves, say what they have to say, the tribunal then hears the matter in a very straightforward matter manner and then moves on and makes the, the decision. So that is the, the intent. And I, I will say this. Some islands, for example, like Trinidad and Antigua, actually has an industrial court. That's another option that's available. But again, the challenge with industrial courts is that, again, you have a lot of process, you have a lot of procedure, it becomes expensive, it becomes time consuming and you may face the same challenges with it, which is why we are proposing a quick, nimble and flexible way. And, and so for example, having a deputy Labour Commissioner would help. Because what it may mean is that you would have both the deputy Labour Commissioner and the Labour Commissioner hearing grievances. If you have more, more, more resources, then there's more grievances you can have and the quicker you can, you can deal with the, the issues. On the second issue of contract, I don't, I'm not going to get into a legal discourse of what a contract is. A contract is any agreement between parties in a very simple form, it could be oral or written. But we are talking here not about a contractor who gets a contract to paint a school or to repair lights or contracted maintain the lawn in the botanical gardens. And people know that. We are not talking about a contractor who gets a contract to build drains for the government on the side of the road or to fix the road. We are talking about teachers, nurses, cooks, the secretaries at the schools. That is who we are talking about. The persons whose core jobs, whose core jobs are jobs that are required over and over again to the central delivery of government services. And there is no justification, I'm unapologetic about it, for putting our teachers on contract. There is no justification for putting our nurses on contract. And let me say this to you. I've heard stories of women who worked in the police tailor shop and who were then, without consultation, turned into rural constables. And who, when they didn't ask for it, were turned into women police constables. And then when they retired, they don't have a pension. They can't even pay their mortgage. And if we think as a society that's acceptable, then we need to look at ourselves in the mirror. If we think that is acceptable and justifiable, we need to look at ourselves in the mirror. So we don't need to, to engage in semantics. We know what we are talking about and we know who we are talking about. Thank you.
All right. So this brings us to the end of our... Oh, yeah. Oh, Mr Brian. Just come. Just go on. I'll, I'll repeat the question.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
I made an attempt to fly on the radio. I wasn't successful. First of all, I would just like to congratulate the National Democratic Congress for reorganising and becoming, you know, very proud of our political function in our country. I think our democracy is better. The things I can only care today is very encouraging as a trade union, regarding the alacrity coming from the political leader to fix pension to address monetary abuse which is literally destroying eating away at the public service and to address the minimum wage, which I think is now over based on the law, labour code, a part of moral issues. But I'm not just here to necessarily massage anybody's ego or anything like that. They are good and they are bad. They are bad things, you know, or things that require magnifying glass in terms of examination. Now, I listen to the political leader talk about the arbitration. But it concerns me a little bit in terms of access to the court. For example, the aspect that you're proposing, let's say that, that, that particular framework was complete, would be brought to the pension matter forward. What would happen? A lot of our citizens, despite the, you know, how the judicial system is flawed, have a certain faith in the judiciary. So, you know, we, we might want to examine, re-examine how, you know, can the arbitration model going forward. But apart from that...
Can I respond to that one?
All right. So let me respond to that one. And that's why sometimes as a lawyer, they say you can't discuss law with a non-lawyer, but I, I will make the attempt. The issue of the pension and the way in which it came about is a constitutional matter that the arbitration tribunal will not have any competence or capacity or authority in law to deal with. The simple point was your pensions are guaranteed by the constitution of Grenada. That's the supreme law. Any law that attempts to take away that constitutionally guaranteed right must conform to the constitution. Which, which means the law in effect would have had to be passed in the same way in which you amend the constitution. Once that law doesn't meet that threshold, any citizen who would have been affected by it, whether the unions individually or an individual employee, would have had the right to go to court to have the law struck down as being unconstitutional. An arbitration tribunal for employment law purposes is not dealing with constitutional law matters. Right? So let me, let me assure employees and for that matter, all citizens of Grenada, constitutional law matters are for only one place, the court. You have a guaranteed fundamental right of access to the court when it comes to constitutional matters. Right? Now, that's different from a trade dispute and that's different from a mere employer-employee contractual dispute. So it is those employer-employee trade union dispute matters that we are addressing. But I will also want to make one other point. Going to an arbitration tribunal doesn't mean you don't have access to the court. In fact, you have access to the court. Because if you're displeased with the arbitration tribunal ruling on a point of law, even in the current law, you have the right to appeal directly to the court on the point of law. That's one. Two, if for example, an arbitration tribunal rules in favour of an employee by saying the employer has to pay him $1,000 and that employer does not pay it, the employee has the right to go to the court and register the judgment, the order of the arbitration tribunal. It becomes a debt, just like any other order for a high court. And you then have the right to enforce the judgment in the same way. And that currently exists. So the issue of, and, and we have to understand, it is not just employer-employee situations where the law gives an alternative dispute resolution mechanism first before you resort to court. Right? There are a number of other instances. For example, even within the police force, you have internal disciplinary proceedings. Amongst universities and schools, someone was, was raising this colleague with me today and I pointed out, for example, you hardly ever hear of a student suing a school. You hardly hear a student complaining, well, I didn't like the grade the teacher gave me, so I'm suing the teacher or I'm suing the school. And there's a reason for that because most universities, most schools have their own internal dispute mechanism resolutions. And it is only when you exhaust those and there is some legal point to argue that you then have the right to go to court. And there's a reason for that because if you don't do that, our court system as it is, is already heavily burdened. Right? And, and, and therefore what the development of the modern law is sorted with is that for very specific issues, you give a, if, if you give a specific remedy or right, you give a specific process by which you must follow so that the parties can in fact exhaust that before you come to court. So this is not, and I will just address it one time, this is not about denying an employer or employee the right of access to the courts. You have access to the courts. It is simply saying that for certain types of disputes, trade disputes and for employer-employee relation matters, that you go through this particular dispute resolution mechanism first. And then it allows the court to reinforce that in the case of persons who got an award or judgment for the arbitration. Or if someone thinks the arbitrators heard on a point of law, then you go to the court for the point of law. Right? The court isn't going to say, for example, well, the arbitrator should have believed one person over another person because the arbitrators would have heard and decided who they want to build. So I just want to make that point. This is not denying employers or employees' access to the courts. In fact, it is simply streamlining the process and making it more efficient so that by the time when you are coming to court, you would have exhausted this process and you're coming to court on very specific issues. Oftentimes, the vindication of the right that has already been declared, if for example, there's an award or judgment made in your favour or if the other side feels that on a point of law, the arbitration tribunal heard. So I just wanted to, to make that clear.
So you would say, thank you for that dedication. I suspected, I suspected that constitutional matters would not be able to clarify formally. So now, the question was my idea because it was, I know you can handle it. Senior members of the trade union movement, based on your amazing success and track record as the corporate lawyer, are concerned that if you enter corridors of power, workers may not fare well. Could you just give an explanation as to your position on that and either substantiate this or shoot it off based on how you work and...
Right. All right. So, well, I will start by, by repeating the points I've made here in terms of the transformation of workers. Well, in terms of supporting our transformative platform for workers, I've made it abundantly clear that we will pay the pension. And I would say to the citizens of Grenada, on that test alone, if we are given the reins of power and we don't pay the pension, even I will tell you, vote us out of office. I concluded my speech by saying this, we are all working class in Grenada. When people call people bourgeois and corporate lawyer, it is meant to paint a deliberate picture that they know is false. I said before and I'm going to say it again, I have no intention of apologising for my success as a lawyer. And it is because the rule of law matters that another lawyer who in the past would have been branded corporate and bourgeoisie, it is that same lawyer who took the case on behalf of workers and was able to get, and was able to get the Pension Disqualification Act declared as unconstitutional so that workers today in Grenada, public workers, have the right to the pension. So for the leadership of the trade union movement, it needs to understand that the same way in which corporate Grenada wants good lawyers is the same way in which the workers of Grenada, maybe the trade union leadership doesn't want it, but the workers of Grenada deserve good legal representation. And it is that good legal representation which led to their success on the pension issue. But I will go further. It is because of my success as a lawyer that I can say I am prepared to engage in public service. It is because of my success as a lawyer, I can say to the workers of Grenada and to the voting citizenry of Grenada, that when you choose to walk away from a private career, when you choose to move out from your comfort zone, you're not doing so because you want to remain comfortable. You're not doing so because what interests you is material success. You are doing so because what interests you is the success of your country and to give other persons... And to give other persons, particularly those from the working class, the opportunity to become another successful lawyer. The opportunity to become another successful person, the opportunity to become another successful trade union leader. And I will say this finally about your reputation. Your reputation precedes you. If you are good, people will hire you. And they will tell more people to hire you. That is simply what happened with my career as a lawyer. And I will say this. There are countless Grenadians who have represented, without asking them for money, or how they will pay. In fact, oftentimes, my staff will tell me I'm giving away the phone. Because I grew up in a home and in a village where you help the persons in need. And I can tell you, if you pass by my grandmother's house even now, whatever she has in the house, she will still offer it to you, even if it means she may go hungry herself. So when we come from the working class, it is our collective responsibility to help all our workers, to help all our citizens to do better. And we need to move past the days of simply attacking people and branding them and labeling them for our own political... And I will say this final point to the trade union fraternity and the leadership in particular. I've offered countless free advice on issues that they should tackle and on issues that they should address to help improve the collective well-being of their workers. Maybe because it was free, they weren't interested in it. But I will say this to trade unions and to trade union workers and so on. If you read the history of the trade union movement, and if you read the history of some of the most progressive periods in our Grenada and Caribbean civilization, you will see that the trade union movement did not back away or shy away from getting involved in politics or from backing political parties that had a progressive agenda for workers. There would be no Sir Eric Matthew Geary if there was not the Grenada Manual and Maritime Workers Union. And I will leave it there. If you do not wish to support a progressive agenda for your workers, for the people you are leading and the people you represent, then you are abdicating your responsibility to lead, and the days of playing politics are over. Good afternoon, good night.
I'm here to speak on the Yabba Buths. I am a I am a Imani worker, I've been working almost like four years, right? I want to know what can be put into, what can be put in place for the youth that are progressive like me and would like to maybe get alone or, you know, be able to do things accordingly. I want to know what can be, this party could put in place. I'm not saying that program is not a good program, but if I could spend four years and cannot achieve anything great, it means that I'm wasting my time, wasting my life. So I want to know what can be put into place if I'm going to keep you... What can be put into place for such people like me and others?
Thank you for your question. You don't mind if we have a little conversation, right? How old are you? Okay, next question. So, what job do you do? You're a bartender. Let me ask you that again, what job do you do? Good, don't refer to yourself as an Imani. Therein lies the psychological trauma that has been inflicted on our young people. You're not an Imani. You're a bartender. And I want to ask you where you do the bartending. But most places that do bartending, if you're a bartender, it's because they need a bartender all the time. And if they need a bartender all the time, you are doing a permanent job. You are doing a job that is associated with the establishment where you work. And you should be paid just like any other worker, whether they cook, maid, gardener, cleaner, manager, whatever the title is. That's your job. And so to a young people who've been branded as Imani, the Imani program was conceived as a training program. So that you are trained and then you get permanent employment in whatever endeavor or job skill or field you engaged in. How could you be an Imani for four years? Or seven years? Or eight years? Precisely. And don't get permanent. Right, so... So, and that's the point I make when I talk about this. You see, because when you go to a financial institution and you brand yourself as an Imani, the conversation is over. They're not lending you anything. They're not even giving you a statement to say do a financial state of affairs. Because you almost guarantee that you have nothing. And so the ability to move from that means you have to be treated like any other worker. You are a bartender. And with bartending should come your NIS, should come your permanent, should come your incremental salary increases that happens, whether it's every year or whenever there's a union negotiating contract. Right? And I know those things are not happening. And I'm saying that is why when we say we will regularize this, this is what it means. Because that is how you'd be able to go to a bank or a credit union to show that you are a bartender. And that's your salary, this is what you've worked for, that you have been paid this NIS etcetera etcetera, that you're entitled to paid holiday, that both your employer and yourselves are contributing to the NIS, and that when there are increases in salaries, that you benefit like every other worker from the incremental increases in salary. Right? That your employer will send you on whatever job training that is required to keep enhancing your skills as a bartender. That is what we intend to do. And I'm saying it is a disgrace. Because no other government in the history of Grenada has done this to its citizens and its workers. It is a disgrace to have people who are telling you they've been Imanis for seven and eight years and they're on contract. They have gotten no salary increases, that they've been told that they have to pay the NIS. Right? And there's no justification, there's no excuse for it. And that's why I've said I'm unapologetic about ending it. Because it is, and I've said, you ain't getting to the point of pension and so on yet. You ain't getting to when you're in your 40s and you have children and you have to send them to school, or they want to go to university. How are you going to address that? How are you going to ever own your own home? You can't even rent an apartment. Right? So I'm saying this. We have to improve and treat our citizens and our young persons as the workers they are. You appreciate that for all of the Imanis, hundreds of them. You think any of them could join a trade union? Where is the trade union movement in insisting that those persons who have been branded as Imanis are, in fact, workers, and they should have the right to join a trade union? That is what you need to address, not branding me as a corporate lawyer. There are hundreds of Grenadian workers, particularly young people, who have been disenfranchised, who have been made to believe that their station in life is $800, and that if you even think independent, I'm taking it away from you. What I'm saying to you all of the Imanis, you are worth more than $800, you are worth more than $900, you are worth more than... And just like every other worker in Grenada, you are entitled to be paid properly, you are entitled to be treated decently, and you're entitled to have the same rights to join trade unions, to organize, mobilize, and to fight for better terms and conditions, so that no government will victimize you. So that no government will victimize you and tell you they're not renewing their contract, or they will fire you simply because you're asking for improvement in your terms and conditions of service. Right? So for all of the Imanis who've been victimized, whose contracts have not been renewed, or who've been threatened, because I know they're doing that, who've been threatened, as I started off, you can run, but you cannot hide. And as you know, people will say, one day kongoté, it will come home. As workers, because that's what you are, as workers of Grenada, you deserve to be treated fairly, equally, and you deserve the same terms and conditions of work as any other person fulfilling the same job that you are doing.
Ladies and gentlemen, I know your heart, your mind is filled with hope right now. Grenada is starting to feel like Grenada again. All right, so I'd like to thank you all for coming out today. We can't give everything in one day, so we're going to save some for next week. We will be addressing cost of living, and we invite you again to come out, listen, engage, and get ready for the transformation, get ready for change, get ready to move, to move Grenada forward. Thank you.